Good evening and welcome to the January 9, 2023 meetings of the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment and Rockingham County Planning Board. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we are gathered in this meeting representing the county and the citizens of the county to find, to hear and to adjudicate the requests that are before this board. We are grateful to be able to serve this county and we pray that all proceedings in this meeting will be fair, courteous, insightful, and be able to arrive at what is best for both the county and for the citizens. And we pray for thy help in all we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let the record show that there is a quorum present to conduct the business of both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The agenda is unanimously adopted. The next item on our agenda is approval of the meetings from November 14, 2022.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from November.
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the November 14, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition. The vote's unanimous, and the minutes are approved. This is going to be a dual meeting. This body serves as both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board. So at this time, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment conducts hearings. This hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. That means that it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The board's discretion for these cases is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you'll be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and must provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. At this time, we will ask staff to present our first case in this hearing and our only case for this hearing. It's a variance request 2023-01.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't want to be yelling either. Let's see here. As Paul mentioned, our first case tonight is a variance request, first case of the year 2023-01. Mr. Donald Rhodes, who lives at 3552 Vance Street Extension, is specifically requesting relief from the general 10-foot setback from a side property line in the residential districts. I'll get more details as I go through, but that's the specifics of the request. Located in Readsville Township, here's a general proximity map of the vicinity. It's just outside of Readsville, in between Readsville and Wentworth. I feel like I'm yelling. Okay, that's better. Zoning in the area is purely residential, residential agriculture and residential protected. This is a, this is from our aerial photography that we see in our geographic information systems. This was taken January of 2022, so it's fairly recent. Sometimes it can be a little hard to interpret these until you've seen a few, but you'll notice where the house is underneath some of the tree canopy there. There's a spot marked W, that's the well, and the red box in the back is the septic tank. The yellowish-brownish lines are the septic leach field, the drain lines. The lot itself is 13,000 square feet. It abuts others that are zoned residential. The specific section of the ordinance we're talking about is the dimensional standards table, Article 4, Division 2, Table 45.01-1. This is where all of the setbacks for each of the different districts are contained. Mr. Rhodes purchased this property in July of this year. He recently erected this storage unit on the parcel. Currently, it's sitting in front of the home, encroaching on the front property line setback and on the side property line setback. I'll get to my diagram in just a moment. He'd like to move the structure to an area beside the home that would leave it approximately seven feet from the side property line, but would bring it into conformance with the front property line. The structure's a very small one. It's 10 by 2, 10 by 12 feet on all horizontal dimensions, meaning it just requires a zoning, not a building permit. No permits have yet been issued. The property has been inspected by myself, Chief Code Enforcement Officer Ben Curry, and Community Development Director, Mr. Marziano. We've all been out to take a look at the property as it stands right now. Before I talk about the criteria, this is the site plan that the applicant submitted, excuse me, which shows the location of the well, septic system, fence, house, and where he proposes to put the building. This one is oriented, the directional orientation is simply as if you were standing on Vance Street Extension facing the house on this one. It doesn't have full directional orientation. Based on this map and the information that we have at hand, I put together this sort of plot plan. It's basically a plot render. It shows the home. It shows where the building is currently located, which is up close to Vance Street. It's about less than 15 feet from the front property line at the moment. The right away from Vance Street is about 60 feet. You can see where the drive and parking areas are, the take-up, and if I can go back to the picture some, if you need me to, the take-up space. The well requires a certain amount of setbacks from structures, the septic system, and the home. You can see where the septic system is here a little more clearly with the tank being red and the leach lines in that yellowish-brown color. The proposed location is to the southeast of the home, between a fence and the home itself. That, like I said, that would bring it into conformance with the front property line, but it would still be about seven feet off of the side property line. I'm going to go back to the picture here. This shadow that you see on the southeast side of the parcel is the fence that Mr. Rhodes has in place, and he would like to keep a storage unit inside of the fence. I don't think there was anything else specifically I wanted to point out about that. These are just some pictures of what the structure looks like. The moving pod is now gone. There were some things that Mr. Rhodes was moving into the home, but it's now gone. This next picture is just very similar to that one. And if you'd like me to point out anything or have any questions on that, I'd be happy to. As always, with a variance, keep in mind that we have a set of very strict criteria that we have to consider. I'm not going to read them, but they're the statutory criteria. If any one of those is not met, the variance cannot be granted. All four must be met. In addition, the general criteria, this A through F on the second page of the staff report, details how the variance must fit into, the ordinance, no impacts, danger of fire, et cetera. Staff feels like enough information has been submitted for consideration of the variance. Mr. Rhodes' written report is included in the packet. I want to see if there was anything in the packet that I wanted to point out. I don't believe there was. Yeah, that was it. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys might have.
As I'm looking at this drawing, the one that's on the screen now, would the distance between the proposed shed and the fence be five feet?
With the fence, it may be closer to five feet. I'll let Mr. Rhodes confirm that because the fence sits slightly inside the property line. I don't know by exactly how much.
I see that, yeah. In the, in the photograph, it looks like it's like six inches from the fence.
Yeah, at present, it's almost sort of propped up against the fence. It's off, it is off of it, just a hair. Hang on, let me get to the next photograph. There you go. There's probably maybe 12 inches of clearance between the fence and the storage unit. And the fence, from this angle, sits in a couple of feet from the property line, so you can sort of visualize where that property line is on that side, and it runs back at a diagonal angle.
There's three large trees that the fence line runs against that makes that, but the property line actually runs through the trees.
It does.
And so they, they really can't move that fence over any further.
There are some, you know, it's, staff doesn't make recommendations on variances. I'm not making a recommendation, just presenting the evidence. But I think there are several things about this property and the request that should be considered. But yeah, you're right, trees are, these are natural growth. Some of them have grown up right on the property line. Yep.
On your rendering, I know these are both, the one from the applicant and the one from you. The building is shown almost parallel to the back of the house, at the back of the house, but on his, it's further back. Is there any, is stipulating that should be, should meet right there at the back of the house?
No, that was just how he drew his and how I drew mine. It's representative. It's not to scale, except for the measurements that I did take from GIES. And the applicant, I'll let him explain exactly where he's talking about putting the structure. I did note on the rear of the property, I did some measurements as far as where there might be some space, and you can see those at the rear property line. That line is scaled, that 40-feet line, according to GIES, my measurement tool, which still is a scaled estimate, but it is scaled. And each of those other lines equals about 22 feet running sort of north-south there. So that's about a 44-foot line there. I just wanted to point that out. Any more questions?
So, Lynn, going back to your, to your rendering.
Sure.
So you've sort of mapped out the space at the back of the property. Then with the building on the property, what would the net setback be if you dropped that building smack in the middle of that square?
Oh, I see what you mean. If, if it were possible, I'll let the applicant speak more to that. To locate it in that rear area behind the septic field, it would need to be 10 feet off of each of those lines. And given the amount of space that's there and the size of the structure, theoretically, it could fit in that space and meet the required setbacks.
Okay.
And I'd weigh that heavily with theoretically because I believe there'll be testimony from the applicant about, about moving it to that location.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Once again, the aerial photograph that shows where the property lines are, the trees and things like that, I'll leave it on that drawing for now.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, are you present? Before you speak, first, first thing I want you to do is state your name and address for the record.
Donald Rhodes, 3552 Vance Street Extension.
Now, is there a Bible up there? If you'll place your left hand on that Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. What is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know about this application, I mean, the Board of Adjustment, sorry?
Thank you. Let me say first, I'm new to this, so I'm just winging it. I don't really know. Mr. Cochran has, has given really, I guess, the good basic layout. One thing that I would like to do is, I guess you're seeing it, the item that is labeled as the septic tank. I, I don't have it with me now, but there is a, a department in your facility that keeps track of those instructions, whatever. And this septic tank, I believe this septic tank is closer to the fence, is more or less centered between the house and the property line on that side. This makes me nervous of having the building actually carried above, over the septic tank, as I understand it, these are plastic items now. And I've, I've seen septic tanks caved in before, and they, it can be difficult. So that precludes me from really wanting to take the building into the back. And on the left side, I would end up having to encroach on the neighbor's property. And now that I'm understanding, those, those buildings are actually drug to their place. And I really don't know that I want to chance any kind of legal actions with that neighbor. That kind of hamstrings me or, or boxes me in to what I propose on this, this situation. There is, where you're seeing the house and the proposed place for the shed, there's a, and, and I bought this thing, it was, it was, all of this stuff was already set up when I bought it. There is a, a heat pump transition unit, external transition unit, that is between, what would be between the house and the, the shed. And that would cause me to not, not be able to put it right up against the house, which would actually save me a little bit of space here. But I don't know, really know what else I might share with you that could shed any better light on it.
All right, so let me get this clear. The, are you, is he able to see the drawing that's up there?
I've saved the drawing.
Okay. See where the number 12 is on that little hatch mark, hand-drawn building? Is that where the heat pump is?
Yes, yes, sir. It's, there's a back door on that side of the house, maybe one-third the way back, which would be in front of the 12 as you see it. And that heat pump would be probably right within two or three feet of where that, that 12 is placed.
I would, to add to that, I did not draw it on here, probably should have, but our ordinance also has a requirement that structures on residential properties, unless they are built to be permanently attached to the primary residence, have to be separated by five feet. So they'll have to be five feet in between the house and the shed. So that area that has the heat pump and maybe a foot or two would meet that five-foot requirement. So unless the shed was going to be a permanent attachment to the home, you wouldn't be able to do that anyway. Does that make sense? Cindy? Okay.
So you're not intending to put a foundation underneath this?
No, sir, I am not.
Okay. Well, that works in your favor, actually, because there's no way that the alternative could be considered. Any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes, you just stated that when you purchased the house in July this year, is that correct?
Ma'am.
I'm sorry, not this year, last year. The building in question was already there, so you...
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. That was in fact my building.
Okay, so you brought it with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And my next question is, we, as before, when I asked staff, there's a section in the back of the, of the property that seems not to encroach on the leach field and/or the septic system, and it looks to be a bigger spot.
Perfect place.
Yeah, can you tell me why, why there's no plan to put it back there?
Yes, ma'am. This, this rendering, I believe it's not act, act perfect. What you're seeing is a red, a red dot there, that's the septic system. And that septic tank, I believe, and I've seen, I don't have it with me, I have seen the original drawings, that septic system is further, on your screen, it would be down, further.
I'm talking back here.
So it's, so it's actually halfway between the house and the property. Now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and my question is, if you see the, the rendering, the staff rendering, there's that section in the very, very back where you've got 40 feet of clearance, and then on each side, you've got that 40-foot and then 22-foot on either side of that. So it looks like, what, what keeps you from moving it back there and...
Well, that's, that's what I was getting to. That, that septic tank being essentially right under the, the passageway beside the house, if it wasn't there, it would be, this would be a non-contest. But being there, those septic tanks are plastic, and that building weighs considerable. And I'm afraid that somebody pulling it back there across that septic tank is going to cave in that septic tank.
Right, yeah. It's here.
And I guess that's really the...
You can't go over these pipes. You can't drive over those.
You'll crush those septic...
Yeah, you'll crush them.
Okay.
That I had lived prior, the landlord had a septic tank sitting out that way, and electrical, electrical vehicles came and they told him, said, "Don't park it there," and he did. They ended up putting him in a new septic tank. So that would be the penalty for doing that, in my view.
And if you're, if you've got a little bit more accuracy in understanding where these things sit...
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many feet from the edge of the building to the fence you will have if you move it to the proposed place?
I believe that will be five feet.
Five feet.
I'm, I'm calculating, and I put a tape measure under the fence to the property line, and I'm, I'm anticipating that to be eight feet. And the, the fence is three feet inside.
Five feet here and five feet there.
But how, from here to here, how many feet total?
Five feet.
Eight. Eight, eight feet to the property line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, and the...
The fence is inside the property.
The fence, yeah, but the ordinance is 10 feet, right? Got it, okay. All right. Okay, I have no more questions. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Rhodes? Gentlemen? No. Okay, thank you, sir.
I will add that Mr. Rhodes, you know, has testified that the septic tank is probably located a bit more south. Sometimes these environmental health drawings are not exactly in the right place. They can vary by a few feet. You can see here where one of the leach lines appears to cross over the property line. I doubt that's the case. I think the property line in GIES is probably off a little bit on that top side in relation to the septic tank, so I just wanted to make that point.
And in my opinion, I think all four have been met. Anyone like to comment after looking at the statutory criteria?
Well, I mean, not to provide opinion, but we're, we're looking, the, really, it's, it's the edge of the building to the property line that I, quite frankly, I'm worried about. And we're talking the difference of, you know, eight, eight feet rather than 10 feet. That's, I don't think that, that doesn't bother me.
Was there any comments from the neighbor, Ginger Harrelson?
We've had no, no comments, no inquiry phone calls, no phone calls for or against. It's been pretty quiet.
If there's no further discussion, we should put this to a vote. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would it be economically feasible for the property owner to somehow, I don't know how it would be done, but somehow geolocate that, that drawing there to see if actually that, that, that septic tank is as far south as he says it is? If it's not, then he wouldn't seem to really have a problem. If it's not, then he wouldn't seem to really have a problem.
I think he's already done that.
Already done that?
Yeah, because he pointed out to us the inaccuracy of the-
Yeah, he, he did some research on that apparently.
He lives there, he ought to know where it is.
Well, he still has to go across the lines. If he's going to move it all the way back here, he's got to, he's got to move it.
He could leave it, he could, if, if that septic tank was in fact not down here where he thinks it might be, if, if, he, he could have the building there and it wouldn't, wouldn't endanger that, that septic tank.
I'm not sure he gains anything by that, if moving it back any. Yeah, I, I, I don't think, if, if the point is to be within, conforming with the statute, I'm not real sure that he's going to gain much from that. It, it gets it out of the way of the house and the, the heat pump. But as, as long as that's five feet, that, that's within code.
And the heat pump doesn't come into play at all?
No, the heat pump will be located in the right where the number 12 is.
Right, yeah. But that doesn't come into play at all?
So the heat pump being in the middle, in between the house and the building does not, does not violate the ordinance? I got it, okay. It is irrelevant then, okay.
Well, in the interest of critical thinking, I guess the only alternative would be to disassemble the building, carry it panel by panel to the backyard and reassemble it.
I don't think it's up there.
Is it completely out of question to use the neighbor's land to get it to the back back there? Does the neighbors get along?
That's something that this board, I mean, we can't, we can't-
Yeah, I think we're-
Get involved in-
Yeah, I think that's mission creep.
That's where the hardship comes in. Because if that's where, it would be difficult to, that would, the expense of that would be, you know, not worth the building.
Well, in that case, can we have a motion, false?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve this variance as written. But I don't have a thing to read. Where's, where's my, all my stuff to read?
There's not a consistency statement with the variance. Just make a motion, and I would include in the motion just a reference that you all feel like it's met all of the, all four criteria.
Okay, I make a motion to approve case number- 2023, well, that was easy, 2023-01. Having, having met all four criteria for the variance.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this application for a zoning variance. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so unanimously, the application for a variance in this case is granted. Mr. Rhodes?
Sure, don't need to. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
You're very welcome. We don't often get that kind of treatment. I need a motion to adjourn the-
So move.
Board of Adjustment. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Adjustment. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Vote unanimous. The Board of Adjustment is adjourned, and we will now convene the meeting of the Planning Board. Requests for zoning changes involve changes to the zoning map. Zoning map changes reviewed by the Planning Board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Want to get that? Planning Board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related to, but not limited to, later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agencies, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency service, and North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given an opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of this meeting. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will be then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. With that said, we're going to call upon staff to present case number 2023-02.
Let me forward these slides a little bit. Thank you, Paul. Rezoning case 2023-02 is a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural, similar to many that we have seen since late 2021. Located at 161 Berrymore Road, Wentworth Township. This is a nonconditional straight rezoning request. It's located just a little bit northeast of Wentworth. The neighborhood is a mix of RP and RA. We felt comfortable recommending approval for this one because of the almost adjacent surrounding area of residential agricultural. In addition to the land use plan, it's in the G1 land class, which recommends RA zoning in most situations, especially when located near these targeted commercial crossroads, which this one is. G1 is characterized by low-density residential development with mixed housing types. Policy G1 encourages residential development to be located in areas surrounding existing rural crossroads as identified in the future land use map. It is target, it's targeted as a matrical of the land use plan. The size is 1.2 acres, which is sufficient for development. It's an existing parcel of record, so it can be developed. This will allow all uses in the residential agricultural district. This odd sort of situation on the parent, on the parcel that's surrounding it, where you have the RP line just up against the RA line. I did just a bit of research, but I think property lines have changed over time. I think that used to run with a property line, that zoning cut right there. And I believe this lot was later subdivided out of it, maybe in addition to others somewhere in the area. So that's, I think that's where that combined zoning on that parcel probably came from. Because otherwise, it just doesn't make a lot of sense for it to be zoned that way, split zoned that way. This is what I summarized here. Generally, we believe, consistent with the land use plan and reasonable considering the zoning characteristics in the area. Therefore, we will leave it up to you guys. I'm glad to answer any questions. I believe several people have signed up to speak. The applicant is here also.
And I have a couple of questions. This looks pretty, it's pretty dense around there. Can you tell me what type of dwellings there are adjacent and, and a little further out?
Adjacent and further out are almost exclusively site-built homes, from what we can tell.
Are they stick-built?
Stick-built, stick-built, yep. As they would have to be in the RP district, unless they were there prior to the zoning ordinance instituted in '89. But yeah, most of the homes in this area, right, especially right around it, appear to be site-built. There may be a modular or two, but, yeah.
And, okay. And how many, how many miles or, or portion of a mile is that, is that lot from Highway 14? Is it, like, you can almost see it, or what?
I haven't, hang on.
Listen. Okay. Have there been any calls or, or questions or concerns about this?
We had a couple, just about two inquiry calls. We did have one phone call from someone who expressed opposition to it. I believe, Marcy, did you or Vic take that call?
I took that call. There was one call I took that was opposition. I believe Vic took the other calls.
What was, yeah, what was the opposition?
They don't want mobile homes in the neighborhood.
So, and, and there, this is what's going to be put there, right?
I believe that's the plan. The applicant is here representing CMH Homes. CMH Homes sells, manufactures and sells modulars, mobile homes, yep.
Okay.
Is there a particular map you guys would like to leave it on? The zoning map, perhaps?
You don't have any, you don't have any photographs of what's around it, do you?
No, we don't. Yeah, if you, it's kind of small and the, the green color-
Okay, Cory, I hit something.
This is a straight rezoning, yep.
Where you see the RA's, there's, there's mobile homes where the RA's are. I didn't see any mobile homes on the RP's. That would be grandfather or something to them.
Yep. The, the mobile homes that are there are almost exclusively, if not exclusively, located in the, on the RA zone parcels. So the, the majority there are site-built. But in the area closer to Harrison Crossroad Loop and the areas set back from there, there are manufactured homes, so. It's a, this one's a slightly delicate balance to take a look at, yeah.
So what you're saying now is there's a rather abrupt line of demarcation between stick-built and manufactured?
In this area, yeah, there is. The site-built, stick-built tend to, well, are completely located on the residential protected zone parcels. And the mobile homes are closer to Harrison Crossroad Loop and Mount Carmel Church Road.
And when did you say the RP, the RP district, were, these weren't all, these began as RP, or were they zoned into RP?
My guess is that they were zoned RP at the time of the original ordinance. I didn't go completely down that rabbit hole. Because some of those records get real sketchy the further you get back. But it looks like since then, there have been property line changes and subdivision of lots that make it sort of a little odd-looking with the RP almost seeming to be arbitrary. But I don't believe it was arbitrary. I believe it's just because property lines have changed.
Any other questions for Mr. Carver?
If it were mobile homes, how many could you put on this parcel?
One. The Unified Development Ordinance requires that in any residential district, a primary residential structure must occupy one lot. And one lot is necessary to have a primary residential structure. There are a few exceptions to that, the accessory dwelling unit, the manufactured home for custodial care. But otherwise, it's one residence per parcel period, no matter what size the parcel is, yep, one acre or 100, yep. And if a mobile home were put here, it is subject to the development and appearance criteria in the ordinance. For, in the RA district, on an individual lot, the mobile home must either be a Class A or a Class AA home. Class AA is a double wide. A double wide requires a masonry foundation or masonry curtain wall in addition to a certain amount of, the way that double wide homes are made now, it does meet all the, the current UDL criteria for trying to have it look as much as possible like materials and site that you would see on a site, on a stick-built home. For a single-wide manufactured home, it also must be on a masonry curtain wall or a foundation. You have the option of using a masonry fiber cement board waterproof that can be painted with something like stucco. The single-wide home being, having to be a Class A is required to have siding that is typical to something you would see on a stick-built home. It can be wood, vinyl, aluminum siding, all painted, you know, normal colors, flat paint, that sort of thing. The roof has to either be shingled or have an engineered seam metal roof that has a pitch of one to four. It's, it must rise three inches per 12 feet of run, the, the roof pitch. In addition, double wides are required to have decking on the entrance door. As are single, single wides, they have to have decking at the entrance door. Just some of the appearance criteria. We're actually looking at those and are going to be proposing a text amendment to sort of flush those out a little bit better, clarify some stuff, get rid of some old language. But we're not there yet, that's what the current ordinance says. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Fuquay? For the record, please state your name and address.
Yes, Richard Fuquay Jr., Blanch Road, Blanch.
Okay, thank you. You don't need to be sworn in. That's strictly the court side of the Board of Adjustment. What is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know about this application?
Yes, sir, this is a manufactured double wide. So it will meet all the criteria that Mr. Lynn just talked about. It'll have a brick skirt up under it, all the decking materials that he just spoke about. There's still a lot of people not clear about mobile homes and manufactured homes. If you look at the state law, anything that was built prior to 1978 is considered a mobile home. Anything after 78 was built, is manufactured home. So big difference in a mobile home and a manufactured home. But this is going to be a double wide, two sections. It's not going to be a single-section home. We're just planning to put one home on there. We're just planning to put one home on there. The customer actually had a work tonight, he's not here, he just, he chose that property. He came to us, wanted to build a manufactured home, and we were unaware that, if you look down the road, I can't see it right here, but if you look at the very end of the road there, which you can see from this property, it's a single-wide right there before you get to Mount Carmel Road on Harrison Crossroad. We put, I've been with Clayton Homes for 21 years, I was in Redesville for 14 years, I've been in Burlington for the last seven years, but we put single wides and double wides and manufactured homes right there where it says RA at the end of Harrison Cross. So you can actually see it from that property. So, I think he just thought it was zoned residential, agricultural, he didn't know it was protected there.
Excuse me one second, is this public water and sewer?
No, I believe it's individual well and septic here.
Well and septic, okay.
Sort of in perk.
Just for clarification.
Yes, sir. It's definitely manufactured. There's some site-built homes beside there and across the road there, but if you, you can see at the end, the very end of Harrison Crossroad from there, that's adjacent to Berrymore Road, it's a single-section home at the very end. I'm not sure if they went through the same ordinance or whatnot, or if it's just grandfathered in, but you can see the single-section home from there.
It was likely grandfathered, or some years ago, it's been a while, there used to be a special use permit for a single-wide manufactured home in the RP district, but that hasn't been as part of the ordinance in quite a few years.
Appraised, just like a site-built home, I mean, it's above, way above $200,000, I mean, so I mean, it's just like a site-built home, it's just classified as a Double-A manufactured double-wide.
Any questions for Mr. Fuquay?
I have a question for Mr. Fuquay. Mr. Fuquay?
Yes.
Does CMH Homes own this lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When was the lot purchased?
The deed was recorded on 12/8. I have a copy here if you need it.
Okay. So, was it purchased knowing that it was in the RP district?
No, ma'am. And, you know, we usually call and ask the zoning department, but we took the real estate's word before, that was zoned for a manufactured double-wide. Which we build double wides and modulars, so either way, you know, we'll build a house there.
And CMH has been in this business for how long?
Five years.
Okay, so, and it's not unusual for CMH to purchase lots and then find customers to put the manufactured homes on them? That's the business model?
Correct. This property was bought to us from the individual that was buying, wanted to do the land home package. So we had to put the land home package together, he bought the land to us to purchase.
Okay.
He found the site and came to you, you purchased the property?
Correct.
And put the, okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's when we stopped.
And then it was transferred to him?
Very in, once we're through completing the building process, then the bank will deed over the property.
They're closing. Okay. I don't have any more.
I'm at the Burlington location, so I'm not in the Redesville location, so he bought this land all the way to us to help him get the land.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Fuquay? Okay, thank you, sir. You'll be given an opportunity for rebuttal after we hear from the speakers who've signed up.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We're now going to open the public comment period for those who have signed the roster to speak to the board. And we'll begin with Carlotta Stone. And Ms. Stone, for the record, would you state your name and address?
Carlotta Stone, 145 Berrymore Road.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Okay, the first thing is that I live at 145, which they're saying is the agricultural on Berrymore. My house was built by my late husband in 1978, and all of that land from there, up across Harrison, back down, that's zoned RA, was his grandfather's farm land. And it was divided, you know, by the family to build homes on. So it was before the 89, or whatever date I'll say. So, the first thing I'd like to say is that I'm the one that originally marked 161 off, and I sold it to a person who had built a house across the road, and approached me about building a house on my lot. And it was supposed to be a three-bedroom, two-bath, stick-built, but now, we'll say, nothing was signed to that, that was just what he was telling me. And so I sold it to him. From 14 to Harrison Crossroad, there is nothing but stick-built, single-family homes. And besides me being upset, I think my family members are upset too, because this was their family land. And we all just feel like our property's going to be devalued, and so that's mainly the reason we're here, to oppose it.
Any questions for Ms. Stone? Thank you, ma'am. Neil Miller? For the record, sir, please recite your name and address.
My name is Neil Miller. I live at 223 Berrymore Road, me and my wife.
Don't worry about the microphone, we can hear you fine.
Hear is fine, okay. The, looking at the property map that we all have up right now, the, all of the residences that you see on that short section of Berrymore Road are stick-built houses. The, in fact, the last one built is the one that's built directly across the street from the property in question there right now. That was the last one built. The other one, my property at 223 was built in 74. And looking at all of the properties there that are residential-protected, I think gentlemen over here referenced double wides or Double As, whatever they're listed as, there's not a single one on Berrymore Road, really. There's a couple on Mount Carmel Church Road, there's one or two down the road there on the Harrison Crossroad Loop. And you look, if you look at the properties there, everything is residential-protected. It's fairly obvious that that's a, it's an older neighborhood, a lot of the houses that are there have been there since, in the 70s. And, single-family homes, and the property itself, looking at where RA is at and where RP is at, it's pretty well-divided there, that everything, just about everything surrounding the property in question is RP-rated, or zoned, I'm sorry, zoned. And we'd certainly like to keep it that way. That's a tight-knit little neighborhood right there. It's, lots of folks, we always say we live on a short section of Berrymore Road. Everybody thinks that Berrymore Road starts at the stoplight down there at 14 and comes over towards Wentworth, which the biggest portion of it does. But that little section there is a neighborhood that's kind of been together there for a lot of years. Most everybody that lives on that road, with the exception of the new house that was added, has been longtime residents on that road. And we certainly like to keep it that way and not have a manufactured house in that particular neighborhood. And that's why I want to vote, well, I want to ask for, against any kind of judgment on making that property residential agriculture.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm sorry, this is just my curiosity. Right down the road from one seat, from the subject property here, just a few hundred feet down the road to, looking at this map to the right, there's a little log cabin there, looks to be well over 100 years old. Is that, it looks like it might be occupied, is somebody living there?
Yes, sir, that's the one up, you're talking about the cabin at the top of the road, up at...
Well, you call it a cabin, I guess. It looks like an occupied home.
Yes.
But it's an old log cabin.
Yes, sir. It is.
It is occupied, right?
Yes, it is occupied, there's a lady that lives there.
Okay.
And I don't know the actual history of how old it was, but that house, that log cabin is, was moved there. It was, it was put somewhere, it was built somewhere else and it was moved there and restored many years ago.
So it was stick-built in a way? I say it was stick-built in a way.
Those big stick logs.
Right, big sticks.
It's a nice little, nice little cabin up there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Jack Phillips? You know the routine, recite your name and address.
168 Berrymore Road. It's the new house right across the street from this lot, brand-new. Bought it less than a year ago, actually. And I'm against this happening for multitude of reasons. You know, whatever they say the value of it now is, that's good, but it does depreciate over time quicker than the stick-built house. And other than that, it hurts the home values of everyone on this road. I mean, if you go from the very, from the stoplight at 14 up the road, like they've all said, there are no manufactured homes, trailers, whatever you want to call it. It is zoned for a reason, and it kind of comes down to where do you draw the line? Why is there even zoning? You know what I mean? It's to protect the neighborhood, and we all want to be protected. Even in a lot of these RA through here, there's nice stick-built homes, the entire neighborhood is stick-built. Now, once you go down to whatever, Mount Carmel Church, whatever, there might be a couple manufactured homes, but our neighborhood is stick-built homes. And you're looking at trying to protect the interest of one party, but we want to protect the interest of the entire neighborhood, and I think that's really all it comes down to.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
I have a question for Mr. Phillips. So you live, your lot is, can you see the map in front of you? You're directly in front of it, correct?
Directly in front.
Okay. And how long, you built a house there? How long ago did you build this house?
Well, my cousin actually built it, but it was completed less than a year ago. He's also the same one who purchased a lot from Ms. Stone across the street with the intentions of building an even bigger, nicer stick-built home. And I'm not going to get into his personal life, but he's had to liquidate a lot of his assets. And we're all fine with that, is what it is, because it's a protected lot. It's where you cannot put a manufactured home. But now we're having to come to this, to where they're trying to put one, and it's not our fault, no offense that they didn't do their homework, and they purchased a lot without knowing the zoning. At the end of the day, that's free draw the line, it is what it is.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam Phillips? Please state your name and address.
I'm Sam Phillips, and I live at 532 Tally Road. I'm the outlier here, I don't live in the neighborhood, but I have a vested interest, not only in this neighborhood, but in this county. And I'm a financial advisor now, but before I became that, I spent my career in real estate, both development and sales. I was a home builder, I actually built a house within a half-mile of this on Harrison Crossroad. And so I've done a lot of work with the planning and checking on zoning myself, both to help my clients, customers through the years, and also myself personally. And I would never purchase a property that I didn't understand what the zoning was. And if I wanted to try to change the zoning, I knew to always negotiate that as part of the deal and come in front of a board like you before we made the purchase. But that being said, at this point, my son, Jack, is who you just heard from, and he is a 24-year-old young professional, works at Duke Energy. He's married and got a five-month-old child, and he and his wife easily could have left Rockingham County like so many people have done. We talk all the time with educators and business owners about how do we keep these young, smart people here in Rockingham County? And having his job with Duke Energy, he first worked out of their lot on the other side of Greensboro, and it would have been very easy for he and his wife to have taken that baby and gone and built a house over in Guilford County somewhere, and been a lot closer to home. But my wife and I were tickled when they decided they wanted to be here. And so we went out and started looking for houses last year, and it was a hard time to find houses. We were lucky that we found a builder that was halfway through completing this house. We went and checked out the house, we liked the bones that were there of the house, the builder did allow Jack and his wife to finish out the house, and really nice, lots of upgrades in the house. I did my homework and checked zoning around it, because that's the technical part of who I am, and I knew that Jack and his wife were excited about the possibilities, but I wanted to make sure they were protected. And so Jack and I actually had the conversation about that you're not in a subdivision here that's going to be, quote, restricted, however, you have the government's protection. And I explained zoning to him, I mean, he understood some basics, but we talked about the difference in RP and RA, and so are the other zonings, and that what comes with that, because there are lots of differences in RA and RP. Jack actually farms for fun. He works at Duke Energy for his real job, but for fun, he leases a farm and goes out in farms because he's not going to bring cows and pigs to this neighborhood. So when you put RA on there, this is not a variance, this is a change that's permanent. And it can allow any of those uses, and there are many, many uses on there. And I've spent a lot of time studying your own documents, have read every page of the 2040 plan that you've got here, and I've studied your low-density growth. I've also looked at your own applications that you've got here. One thing that was signed and attested to is that the applicant said, "I understand that the zoning is permanent and will run with the land. I feel that this will serve my best interest." I agree with him. But that's not what we're here about. We're here about the interest of the neighborhood, the community, and this county that we all want to live in and be proud of. I love RA zoning, I live in it. And I think RA should be protected as well. But I think we can coexist. I think that we need to be careful about opening Pandora's Box, and indeed, when we start going inside of RP and changing it to anything other than that, you're going to have people that really start questioning Rockingham County, because we are a great county. And I think that we need to be organized in our development, and that's actually one of the things that's listed here, is about that the growth and development's going to be organized going forward. I think it should be. And I just hope that, I know it's a tough decision to make here, but the bottom line is my son and his wife, like I said, they could have gone elsewhere, they put down their life's savings as a down payment on this stick-built house, and chose to live here in Rockingham County. And the builder told us, when he went and met with Ms. Stone, that he was going to build a really nice house. He wanted us to know that that beautiful lot that's over there was actually going to have a house in front, and he wanted to make sure that was okay. He was very nice to them, and we were like, "Yeah, sure." And he assured them that, you know, his plan was to build an even bigger, nicer stick-built house, so we were happy. And I thought that that would, you know, take his value up. I can tell you, as I've spent many years in real estate, I can't tell you how many times I've had people that I would take on appointments, and if there was manufactured housing next to a really nice picture of a house that they'd seen, they, on the internet, they're like, "Take me to this house." And if we got there, they'd say, "Don't even stop." So what I ask you to do is think about, what if you were in rural-protected... So what I ask you to do is think about, what if you were in rural protected and this was happening to you? Or what if it was your son or your daughter and they were in a residentially-protected zoning? Would you really want it changed when they've invested their life savings and going right across the road? Thank you for what you do.
Hold on one second. Any question for Mr. Phillips? Of course.
Mr. Phillips, you said that you had a bit of a vested entry, interest in this beyond your son. How close do you live to this, this growth or this, this neighborhood?
Yeah, so I'm, I have a Reesel address, but I live in Wentworth. So if you go down to the other part of Berrymore they talk about, within about a five-minute drive to where I live. So I live off of Camp Dan Valley Road on Tally Road.
So this is basically sort of your neighborhood as well?
It is. I mean, we consider this, you know, sort of the, the same area, Wentworth School District, and we're all right there together. So yes, I do.
Representing or helping out your son.
Right, a little bit of both.
All right, and that was my only question.
Thank you, sir. Since there are no other speakers signed up, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period for this case and give Mr. Fuqua an opportunity for rebuttal based on the comments that he's heard from y'all. Mr. Fuqua, you have the floor.
The area doesn't devalue, what's his last name again? Phillips. Yeah, the site-built homes are compared to site-built homes, the manufactured homes. As far as appraisal purposes, site-built homes are compared to site-built homes, manufactured homes are compared to manufactured homes. So that won't devalue his home. And then if you look at the RA from 14, it's actually closer. If you own Highway 14 on that second lot to the right, it's actually a lot closer to 14 than the, what's showing on the lot that we're at. So RA is a lot closer to Highway 14. I'm not sure that that's what, that was getting back. Well, it says a thousand feet from Highway 14. But there's plenty more RA properties around there that's closer to Highway 14.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Fuqua? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons. Can I make a quick comment?
Oh, yes.
This is just a technical comment. I meant to rebut, remember to advise you guys at the beginning of the meeting, as you are discussing the merits of the case and looking over the consistency and reasonableness determination, keep in mind, whatever motion you make, whether to approve or to not recommend approval or recommend denial, you do not have to read all of that. We wanted to make it easier for you guys. When you read the motion, that, as it's worded, it automatically pulls in everything that's in the consistency and reasonableness statement. Lately, I'm like, no, they got so used to reading that long thing, they're doing it again. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Any discussion about this case? Yes.
I'd just like to make a, make a statement. A lot of times in these residential protected areas, you see one lot creep in. It changes the whole dynamics of one neighborhood that's, that's been there for decades. And sometimes it's good and sometimes it's not. I'm very surprised, as long as, as the company has been in existence. And, Mr. Fuqua, this is certainly nothing personal to you that, that this oversight would have been missed. That, I mean, it's just real estate building 101. You check the zoning. That's, I mean, that's the first thing you do. So I'm, I'm sorry that you got wrong information. And I think all of these residential, residential-protected lots in this area, even though it goes right up to RA, there's kind of a unspoken demarcation line there. It stops here. It stops right here. And this request goes, in my mind, beyond that. I think we have to hold a line here and let this neighborhood exist, coexist with right beside the residential, with the agricultural land, but leave this as it was, as it is zoned right now.
I'd like to add that we have seen and heard a lot of cases where the homeowner, we've approved these rezoning from RP to RA, but it's usually been where somebody already owned the piece of land and they were wanting to do something that was outside the zoning. But they had really, really good reasons why. And they had, they had a really, they, they had a compelling case as to why this was the piece of property that was right for them. This is commerce right here. This is straight-out commerce. And real estate being a commercial venture, it's the, it's the responsibility, the Realtor and/or the, the builder or the construction folks, to do their due diligence for customers. And that was not done here, but either by the Realtor or, and I'm not, you know, 60-year-old company is going to remain, going to remain in business with no problem. There is somewhere else that, that a manufactured home can be placed in this county with, and be much more in keeping with a neighborhood than trying to carve out one little piece of property in amongst all these stick-built homes. And I think we've heard enough from the residents about the flavor and/or, you know, the, the culture or milieu in this neighborhood, that I have a real problem with this and the fact that this thing was not vetted first before, before a customer was made promise. And it also, it concerns me just a little bit that a, that a company would, would propose purchasing a piece of property with the, you know, oh, well, we'll just go get it rezoned. You'll be fine. We'll go get it rezoned. Well, that's not why, that, that's not how that works. So there's where I am.
I, I concur with the two ladies to my left. And also want to say regarding changing residential-protected lots to residential-agricultural, and yes, Ms. Talbert is right. We've done a lot of those in the last few years since I've been on this board. But it's always been a situation where interspersed amongst a lot of RP has been some RA land. It's not been such a distinct and abrupt line of demarcation between RP and RA that exists in this case. And I also hear the tone of the people who are against this, and I'm, I'm going to vote in your favor. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Scott has the floor for a motion.
I motion, we recommend denial of this request to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
I second.
All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no likes opposition, so it's unanimous that this board will recommend to the county commissioners that this application be denied. At this time, we're going to turn it back over to staff to discuss our new business regarding the calendar for the upcoming meetings for the year. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
And to keep in mind that the commissioner's hearing will be the...
Oh, right.
That's okay. They'll get their notices for the commissioner's hearing when it comes up. The calendar, I've just prepared it for 2023 based on everything that we've always done, meeting the second Monday of each month unless it falls on a holiday. It does not occur in 2023. There's no holiday Monday conflict issue. So all our meetings are on Mondays. We've included the, for February, April, June, August, and October, the potential extra meeting. I know in the past, Tanya and Carrie, as directors, were much more liberal about scheduling meetings on those dates. But staff currently feels like, unless there is a strongly compelling reason, we're not going to have those extra meetings that once a month handles what we need to do. So just keep that in mind. But these are just our dates for 2023. I went through the calendar and laid this out. As the board, you guys just need to approve it, and it will be our little calendar bible unless something changes.
I have a question. In August, you had, you have it on the first Monday. Is there a reason for that?
Did I?
I may have glanced at that incorrectly. I'll have to correct that then. So this, oh, you're right, because that would have been July 31. That will change, I'll change that to, well, that'd be the 14th, I believe.
Well, we can just pencil in that change now and still vote to approve the calendar.
Yeah, what we can do is...
Amend it.
Amend that.
You're August 7th to read August 14th.
And I will, with the corrected calendar, I'll send out, I'll send out the corrected calendar to everyone after it's been approved.
So you need a motion? I make a motion that we approve the 2023 calendar, with the adjustment or with the correction of August 14th.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote's unanimous and the new calendar is adopted. And now regarding old business, we have none. So guess what we need now?
We need to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much and good night.